Good afternoon, Carla. Really good to see you on a Sunday afternoon. We're here for our first digital town hall. Aren't you excited to be here?
Hi, Courtney. I'm most excited to be here. And note that although this is our first digital town hall, we have been having digital town hall with our staff, our team members. So this is quite exciting.
Absolutely, and they have enjoyed them.
They have indeed.
Would you like to lead us in prayer?
Definitely. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Our most righteous and heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus. As we gather in this town hall meeting to celebrate Members' Month and the 142nd anniversary of Victoria Mutual, we pause to invite your presence into this online session, and we ask you to bless and preside over this meeting. Father, you are the foundation stone of this organization, and we acknowledge that it is only through you that we will continue to grow and prosper. As wealth and honor come from you, the rule of all things. In your hands are strength and power to exalt and give strength to us all. So we ask you today to bless each and every member and client of this organization. Touch each individual in this session. Bless every team member who serves our members and clients. Bless our leaders, Michael McMorris, our chairman, Courtney Campbell, our president, and all the leaders of our organization who support them. Grant to them true wisdom and vision to continue to lead our organization. From everlasting to everlasting, you are God. We give you thanks, and we praise your glorious name. Amen.
Good evening and welcome to our digital town hall meeting. This is the first that we're having for our members and clients, and it is a special feature of our Members' Month 2020. This month, we celebrate 142 years. Victoria Mutual was established in November 1878. And so on November the 14th, yesterday, we celebrated 142 years of service to Jamaica. We are streaming live from the banking hall of our Halfway Tree branch at 73 to 75 Halfway Tree Road. And this town hall is a forum in which executives of the Victoria Mutual Group will share with you updates on the developments in the Jamaican economy and how those will impact you. But we will also share with you the benefits that you derive from being members of the VM family. Participants in this town hall will access us via Zoom, YouTube, and Facebook platforms. And we invite you to share your questions throughout this meeting. We will provide answers as promptly as possible. Our presenters for this town hall will be Peter Reid, CEO of the Building Society; Mr. Resworth Berchison, CEO of VM Wealth and VM Investments Limited; Mr. Craig Stephen, who is Country Manager for Carolina and Jamaica; Mr. Conroy Roy, CEO of VM Pensions Management Limited; Mr. Michael Howard, CEO of VM Money Transfer Limited; and Nakita West, Manager of the VM Foundation. I will lead off the presentations with an update on how we have sought to address your needs during COVID-19. In the VM group, we have maintained a sharp focus on serving our members and clients in a customer-obsessed way through this most challenging period. Even before the first positive case was announced in March of this year, we established a cross-functional team to ensure that we were agile in our responses. And we structured our team in five work streams. We have been meeting every Wednesday at 5:00 p.m. to review our plans and how those have been executed to ensure that we are serving you and our team members well and that we're protecting our business. And the five work streams are occupational health and safety, in which we ensure that our team members are properly cared for. The our customer care work stream, ensuring that we're responding to the needs of our members and clients right across the group, right across the world, in all the territories in which we operate. Of course, our financial impact work stream considers how to take actions to preserve the profitability, the capital strength, and the liquidity of our business. And of course, we have a supply chain work stream that ensures that we have been resilient right throughout this period because many of our suppliers, our traditional suppliers, would have had disruptions. And that has worked well for us because our operations have continued very smoothly over this period. And of course, we have a communication work stream that ensures that all our team members, all our members and clients, our regulators, our board of directors are all fully informed of what is happening within the VM group. So our COVID response cross-functional team has worked very well. And if I could elaborate on what we have done for our clients in all our businesses, in the Building Society, in wealth management, in money transfer, in pensions, we have implemented several measures to provide for our members and clients. We have reduced some fees. We have waived some fees. We have waived some penalties. We have offered moratorium for those who may be having difficulty maintaining their payments, whether it is a mortgage with VMBS or a loan with VMIL. And we have also extended our outreach. VM has always been supportive of our communities, but we have taken it a step further this year. Over 100 Jamaican students have benefited from all gifts of laptops and tablet devices to ensure that they are able to continue their education. And just this week, we supported the University Hospital of the West Indies with a new ventilator that will be important in caring for the patients of COVID and other respiratory illnesses. And of course, we have spent a lot of time and effort ensuring that the people who care for you are also cared for. So we have implemented a work-from-home policy that was actually passed and approved in 2018. So that's two years before COVID. And so when COVID came here, it was so easy for us to actually implement this policy. And so over this period, an average of approximately 45% of our team members have been working from home. And that ensures that they're able to remain productive and care for their families and protect themselves and their colleagues throughout this period. And so we have not stopped there. We have also offered counselling services through Family Life Ministries and other partners to ensure that our team members, you know, they may be experiencing some extra stress at this time. They have someone with whom they can speak and to get their appropriate guidance, how to cope during COVID. So those are just some of the areas that we have undertaken and implemented to ensure that we are caring for our team members, we're caring for you, our members, and that we're protecting our business. So speaking about increased productivity, because we have seen that from our team members. I'm going to start now with the presentations from our CEOs who lead our business. And we'll start with Peter Reid, who is CEO of the Building Society Operations. Peter, what have we been doing for our members in the Building Society?
Well, we've kept our doors open first and foremost, which is, you know, a feat in itself because our team members are so critical to this whole operation. And in a pandemic and in a situation where there's so much uncertainty, there's so much fear, there's so much anxiety, our team members have been really resilient. They have been true standard bearers of the VM brand, and they have kept our doors open, attentive to our customers, giving them the same type of service, the same friendly, caring, and wise advice as they have participated in this whole nine months. You know, I mean, when you talked about work from home, I've been one of those who have been able to work from home. And I mean, you know, I mean, never go back into the office, to be honest. But it's been a really good experience in a lot of ways, despite the negativity, despite the deaths, despite the anxiety. And the fact of the matter is that this pandemic is here to stay. The coronavirus is not going away, right? There's no known cure for it yet. I mean, we talk about there's a vaccine. There's talk about a vaccine being developed, but you know, it's not the vaccine that's going to cure it when you're vaccinated. So that has to be spread right throughout the world. Everyone has a basic need for shelter, and that hasn't changed. That's a fact. And it's generally better to buy than to rent. And so, you know, we have kept up our mortgage program right throughout the last 10 months. We've been very vigilant. We have seen our work and our progress flourish, and people have been availing themselves of mortgages. Home ownership is still attainable, and despite the current pandemic, Victoria Mutual can show you how. And that's what we intend to do right throughout. Now, I will tell you that I'm an investor. But the truth is, a consistent saver always outperforms an investor. And that's where it starts, with a savings plan. Or I say, for home, we'll get your down payment goal faster, get you to your goal faster with its attractive interest rates. And persons have to understand that, look, it's a process, and you have to start as quickly as you can and be consistent about it. Pay yourself first before you pay the government. You know, it is a clear, I mean, I guess years of experience has taught me this, but I'm trying to pass it on to my nephews and nieces and so on. And all the young persons, pay yourself first. We offer a product that is member-focused. So we have low interest rates on our mortgages. We have low processing fees. We even have 100% mortgage financing. And, you know, especially for the self-employed person because the truth of the matter is that that person is really diligent in their endeavors. But they also have to demonstrate to themselves and to the institutions like ourselves that they can be consistently, and I want to use a word, but I'm going to use a different word. Because they're consistent and that they're diligent in their saving. Because the fact of the matter is that you have to be diligent. You have to have a good credit score. You have to pay your bills on time. You have to do all these things that will get you these features that we have on our products and get you the property of your dreams.
And set yourself some challenge and targets for those savings as well, right?
Absolutely. Stretch yourself. Stretch yourself. I mean, there are things that we can do without that we, you know, it's not frivolous spending, but it is not programmed spending. It's on program, and therefore, you're spending money on things that you wouldn't normally want or have to.
Some people say that their earnings are so low that they can't save anything from it.
Anybody can save. Don't matter what, even if it's $100 a week, just save it. Just save it. Remember our school savings program, you know? We used to ask children from five years old up to save a part of their lunch money. We had those metal savings pans that we used to hand out. They used to come and bring it to the branch. We'd open it, count it, put the money in their account, give them back their savings pan, lock it and give it back to them, and they go back and they save again. It may look like an analog way of saving, but it worked. And those persons are still with us to this day as adults, continuously saving.
Many of whom now have their own homes.
Exactly. And the truth is, because we're a member-based organization, we never pay fees. We don't donate. We don't feel their savings with dormancy fees. So even if you stop for a while, your money is still there. Come back. We don't pay it over to the government either. So, you know, there are things about our organization that you really have to take into consideration. We can give you access to financial service specialists and mortgage experts who can offer sound investment and tailored specific needs for you. I mean, that really is a benefit, and it's a free benefit. In this time of pandemic, you don't want to come in. You want to work from your home or you want to work from your office. You want to engage with us. We can do online video conferencing in person and give you that personalized banking. We're going to launch our online mortgage portal where you can upload your application and receive a pre-approval so you can go house shopping and track the progress of that application right throughout from anywhere conveniently at your home or in your office. And then our in-house registration process is something where, okay, you don't want to have to use an external attorney that's going to, you know, be less competitive on the pricing that we can offer you. So we are clear that, you know, Victoria Mutual is truly a one-stop for all your financial solutions.
What's the benefit of having Victoria Mutual Property Services as a member of the VM group?
Well, that's even a benefit that is, that is, first of all, they're on the MLS, which is the multi-listing service, right? So they can tell you what houses are in your price range in the locations that you want, free of charge. There are specialists in selling, renting, and sourcing properties for you. So, and this is a free service. This is not a service that competes with any other agency either because it's a multi-listing service that everybody has. So they just have access to every property that's available in Jamaica, either for rental or for purchase. So, and VMPS persons are as friendly as the Building Society and as open and as caring as we are.
And then when you need a valuation...
And when you need a valuation, I will subsidize that valuation for you, up to 50%. So I pay VMPS 100% of what they charge, but you only pay 50% of that charge.
Great. That's a huge saving.
A big saving. A big, big saving.
Thank you very much, Peter. So now we're going to answer some questions. And I'm sure that all members and clients who have been watching have lots of questions for us. So we're going to be looking at them now and... Okay, okay, okay. All right, we don't have any questions as yet. So we're going to continue speaking about how, I think we want to talk a bit more about how our property services, you know, unit helps even our members who are overseas because many of our overseas clients, they live in Canada, in the UK, or in the United States. They are watching us now. They have interest in acquiring a property in Jamaica. Probably some plan to return home. Probably they don't. But, you know, how would they go about accessing the information from VM Property Services?
It's easy. I mean, just like how they're watching us now via Zoom or Facebook or whatever streaming service, they just go on the website, VMPS's website, Victoria Mutual Property Services website, putting the price range in which they're interested, the location which parish that they're interested in. And various properties will pop up on the service. And they can then examine those properties with, you know, more carefully to see where they are and make sure that this is exactly what I want. This is the price range that I have. And then you can go on our website and put in, you know, the numbers, the price of the property, your income, so on. It tells you what your mortgage payment would be. And they can really then calculate, can I afford this? Or do I have to come down in price? Or can I go up in price? I mean, we are in an age where all the information is at your fingertips, right? You don't have to come and speak to somebody until you really need to speak to somebody. Until you come up on a roadblock that you think, okay, I need some advice on this. But it's really self-directed. A lot of it is self-directed. You know your circumstance. You know your income. You know where you want to live. You know the size of your family. You know exactly all the things that we don't know about you yet. But once you put that in, you know...
Peter, VMBS has a large market share in mortgages, in Jamaica, residential mortgages. Have we noticed any... Have we noticed any... Have we noticed any... During 2020, have prices fallen off? Have they decreased? What have you noticed as the leader of the Building Society?
So what I've noticed is that a lot of properties that would normally come on the market are now appearing on the market. So that means to me, that signals to me that persons need to sell, okay? Prices haven't ameliorated, haven't come down that much yet. So it's early days. So I would think, you know, by next, by first quarter '21, you'll see an amelioration of prices. So that property that would normally have listed in March of this year for 40 million might be at 38, maybe at 37 million next quarter. And therefore, it becomes even more affordable. But it tells me that persons are not at the stage where they need to do a fire sale yet. But if you are a purchaser, you don't need to pull the trigger on that purchase just yet. Continue to research. Continue to engage with our property service specialists. Continue to engage with the Building Society and let us give you the most recent information that we have to help you make a decision.
Because it's a more significant investment. So you really want to ensure that you have done all your research before you, you know, make that bold step.
Absolutely. It's the largest transaction you'll do as an individual for most of us.
Absolutely. And, you know, and that very first home is a really big move. So I think we have our first question. I saw it and then it disappeared. I think the date, the question was, when do we expect to launch our online mortgage portal? Do we have a date for that? And then the second question was to provide some more information on how to qualify for the 100% mortgage product.
So we intend to launch our online mortgage portal this month.
This November?
November. Right. We're doing our penetration testing now to make sure it's secure and to make sure there's nothing that can compromise the portal or the customer's information or our information. So that penetration testing is paramount before we can actually launch it. In terms of 100% financing, now, we have a product, 100% financing for self-employed persons. These are professionals, like the persons who are helping us to stream this town hall meeting, you know, plumbers, electricians, hairdressers, tailors, persons who have their own business. The key to it, though... The key to it though is your credit score and your credit worthiness. You have to be seen by any financial institution, including V M B S, as a good risk. How do we determine you're a good risk? You pay your bills on time. You keep up your credit score.
So bills meaning utility bills? Other loans that you have?
Loans that you may have, your credit cards, what, you know, car loans, you know? We, we have a, we have a car loan right now for V M B S members, a hundred percent financing. Hundred percent financing on a car which is an depreciating asset. As you drive that car off a lot, the value starts to go down. So we could be in the hole if you stop paying. How do we determine that you're a good risk? Your credit score. Your loan payments are salary deducted. Your attitude towards debt is of the highest order. And therefore, you know, we decide that you're a good risk. If we decide you're a good risk, then we will make the loan. Sometimes things go wrong, you lose your job in a pandemic and things like that. No, no one can plan for those eventualities or predict those eventualities. But the truth is that, you know, we're a member-based organization. Persons who save with us, who open accounts with us are part of our family. And therefore, who better to take a risk than your family?
Absolutely. So, so Peter, if you, many of our viewers this evening would be university graduates, college graduates, or sometimes even high school graduates. And they're thinking about all of those dreams they have for their first home, for probably their first car. What's the advice that you would give to them, even though? They're just at their first job, right?
So your first job, first order of business, start saving. Open a savings account, open a nice saver account that gives you a better rate than an ordinary savings account. And it's going to take a while, could take a year, two years. No matter that, just be disciplined about it. You have to have an attitude towards debt that says, I'm a disciplined payer. I'm a reliable risk. And once that is established.
A lot is possible.
A lot is possible.
Okay, another question. We, the customers of V M B S, need access to more banking machines, ATMs, machines at UTEC, dental school, Manor Park, Ligonie, Papin Square. These are to promote more financial experience. ATMs will promote competitiveness in the financial marketplace. What do you respond to that, Peter?
So, yes, we would like to put more machines in there. But you remember, our mantra is that everything in regard to an ATM is free. So if you use an N C B ATM, you use a ScotiA ATM, I pick up the tab. You don't pick up those fees.
So V M B S pays the other institutions when our members use their machines?
Machines for free. So you can, you can go to Manor Park and go in and use a ScotiA ATM there or N C B's ATM there. I am going to pay the bill, not you.
A lot of people don't realize that, so they may shy away from using the other, the ATMs of the other institutions.
Well, I'm telling you now.
What about the, that also applies to point-of-sale terminals at merchants, right?
So you go into Manor Park Pharmacy, you use your debit card to pay for, you know, goods in there. I pick up the interchange fees. You don't pick it up. It's not charged to your account.
And that's because VM is a mutual. We are operating for the benefit of our members. We are not seeking to maximize profit.
No, not at all. And, and I mean, if you want, you know, just as an aside, we return tens of millions of dollars to our members through this program every year. It's not a cheap service.
That's real daily dividends.
That's daily dividends.
Peter Reed, thank you very much for what you have shared with all members and clients this afternoon. We hope that they all found it beneficial. And please, Peter is open, Peter and all his team members, you know, branch managers or regional managers or financial service specialists, our C S Rs and tellers were all available to serve you and to answer any further questions that you may have. Thanks again, Peter.
Thank you.
Please welcome Mr. Rezworth Birchinson. Rez is the CEO of Victoria Mutual Investments Limited, our listed company in the VM Group and VM Wealth Management Limited. Welcome, Rez.
Thank you, President.
Please tell all members and clients what has been happening in the Jamaican economy, how it impacts them and how VM Wealth can help them to thrive in the midst of this pandemic.
Sure, thank you, President. Good afternoon, members. I would say happy anniversary. We celebrate one forty-two years. I'll build on something that Peter said before. So the V M B S is the first step in your, in your goal towards national independence. So you start to save, you save for some important purchases, you save for your house, you save for your car. VM Wealth is the second one on the ladder. So as you look to purchase your second house, as you look to, you know, to grow wealth for your family, you know, VM Wealth takes over. VM Wealth offers all the wealth margin products, investments, bonds, stocks, et cetera. So as you move from X, as you move from the first one, then you want to talk to VM Wealth. And as much as two thousand and twenty has been a very challenging year, we believe as investment experts that opportunities arise during these challenges circumstances. I'd like to say to the persons that the Jamaican investor would have survived many challenges during the seventies, during the eighties, we had FinSAC, we had various challenges. Yet if you had invested in wealth-creating products in twenty twenty, you'd have been far ahead of the curve. So I have three messages that I want to discuss on this slide. First of all, where are the opportunities? In two thousand and nineteen, many investors were gung-ho on stocks. And because of the pandemic, prices are off and persons aren't so interested. What's our message? Our message is, it is in these times when you ought to look at equities. A lot of the stocks now are trading a lot lower than they were trading twelve months ago. But these companies are sound, well-managed, you know, strong balance sheets, very good products, and they're on a growth trajectory. So now you want to say, how do I start to slowly acquire some of these companies to create wealth for five, ten, fifteen, twenty years on the road? That's the first thing I want to say. Secondly, you may say, you know, VM Wealth, you know, I don't have the time or the inclination to take on direct purchases. How can you guide me? And I would say, that is when you want to start to look at our unit trust products. And our unit trust products are specific portfolios, our equity portfolio, our real estate portfolio, our Jamaican bond portfolio and a US dollar bond portfolio. It simply means that you invest and as experts, those portfolios are managed to your benefit. So there's no need for you to follow the market on a day-to-day basis. We as the experts follow the market and do transactions to maximize your benefit. Our property fund for two years has been the number one property fund in Jamaica and also our equity fund for the past four years have generated returns of greater than thirty percent. So certainly, if you're looking to create wealth, you want to look to those portfolios. And thirdly, I want to say to the entrepreneur, to the person who owns a business, whether it be small, medium or large, this environment will create opportunities. You will see, you know, your competitors perhaps may want to do a merger or there's an acquisition. Come and talk to us about how we can facilitate that transaction for you. How it is that we can facilitate you raising capital on the Jamaican Stock Exchange or on the private market or raising debt. So to prepare your business for the post-pandemic world. So I just want to reiterate that it is in these times, even though there are challenges, there are the opportunities. So I want to encourage your members, come and talk to us, come and talk to VM Wealth about how we can create value for you over the medium term. As a VM Group member, as a VM B S member, you may say, well, you know, how do I benefit from VM Wealth? There are three ways. On the equity purchases, when you trade with us, there's a standard equity commission. We give a special commission to our members, which is point five percent lower than the standard rate. If you trade online, which is where most persons are going in this pandemic era, our commission rate is zero point seven five. It is actually half the standard rate for members. And of course, if you take with a margin loan, our interest rates are lower for our members. So you can see that as a member of V M B S, how it is that VM Wealth is also providing benefits to you. Peter spoke just now about how, when he used the ATM at the competition, how he's picking up a tab. Again, at VM Wealth, we're also providing value to our members even as a member of this society.
So if you're going, that means that if you're planning to purchase equities, it actually suits you to do those trades through VM?
Exactly, 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 exactly. So certainly want to encourage members to come and talk to us. So what have we been doing to support our members? I want to raise a number of things, I won't discuss everything on the slide. First of all, as an investor, there is, you want one very important thing at this point in time. You need information, you need advice and you need support, right? They're all wrapped up together. And we've been doing a number of webinars. Every month we have a webinar, whether it be on stocks, on bonds, on unit trusts, on raising funds, on the J C or in the private market. If you are not invited to those seminars, it's because we don't have your information, please send us an email and we'll add it to the list so that when we're having future seminars, you can be so invited. We're also having, we're also dispatching quite a number of publications. We have a daily report that goes out every evening to give a summary of what's happening on the Jamaican Stock Exchange and also in the bond market. And then also our, our wealth advisors. We're also executing a number of calls to our clients. I mean, year-to-date, we have called over five thousand five hundred clients because we want to have those conversations. How are you feeling in this pandemic, you know? You know, how are you, how is your portfolio structured for, for, for the current pandemic and also for the future? How do we reassure you, especially based on the fact that equity prices would have fallen? But we want to have those conversations with you just to ensure that you are appropriately guided. Additionally, we have said that, you know, Kingston isn't Jamaica and there are a number of communities all across Jamaica where we certainly have to give more touch to our members. So this year, we said that let's expand our footprint. And thus far, we have opened locations in Orchard Hills, in UTEC, in Ligonie, in Sav. And just yesterday Friday, is a country term, yesterday Friday, we opened our, another location at Duke Street. And then to come before the end of the year is also a location at Half a Tree. So when you visit any of these locations, VM B S locations, just ask, where is the wealth office? Come and talk to us about how we can help you to create wealth in the post-pandemic world. So what's to come? I must say that November and December are going to be exciting months for, for clients of VM Wealth. First of all, we have two more, we have one more location to launch, which is Half a Tree. We have a brand new product which we're going to launch pretty soon. So Gold Maximizer Unit Trust, which is a balance fund. We're very excited about that product. We've been, our clients have been saying, we want a balance fund. A fund where, you know, the investment manager will determine the appropriate allocation between equities and bonds that portfolio is coming. Our clients are also saying, you know, how do we trade digital assets? We all hear about Bitcoin, well, the J C has such an initiative and so that product is also coming. Our members are also saying that we're looking at the stock markets of other developed countries. And we're seeing where, you know, things are happening. In as much as the Jamaican stock market might be in a bearish mode, the, the stock markets of more developed countries are creating value. So certainly, we're responding to that feedback to say, you know, in short order, we're going to allow our clients to trade overseas equities. And then the last platform we want to launch is our IPO platform. Whenever there's an IPO, there's too much paper being circulated. We want to offer our client that option. You know, you subscribe from IPO from the comfort of your home. And, you know, because we want to be seen as creating that value. And then I also want to speak about that we're doing a lot for our team members. Our group H R is doing a lot for our team members in terms of training and retraining because the conversations that we're going to have with our clients in the post-pandemic world will have to be richer conversation about estate planning, about, you know, a holistic view of persons' financial circle and how the VM Group is helping persons to create value for the, for the long term. So I will close there, President.
Thank you very much, Rez.
And just to say happy anniversary and to encourage the, our clients on the VM B S side to speak to your wealth advisor at a location which I just highlighted.
Thank you very much, Rez. That was lots of rich information. Please don't go too far because we're going to have a Q and A section for the questions on wealth management immediately after Craig Stevens shares with us. So I'm going to introduce Craig Stevens now. In September twenty nineteen, Victoria Mutual Investments Limited purchased thirty percent shareholding in Cariland Caribbean Holdings Limited. Cariland Caribbean Holdings Limited is the Caribbean's first online lender, the first peer-to-peer lender in the Caribbean. And at that time, it only operated in Barbados. But since twenty twenty, Cariland has now launched in Jamaica. And we're pleased to have Craig Stevens with us. Craig is a country manager for Cariland in Jamaica. Welcome, Craig.
Thank you for having me, Courtney, and thank you to the VM team. Congratulations on one hundred and forty-two years old. It's a wonderful service. It's not easy to survive that long and you've done so very well. And we really appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak to your membership now.
Okay, so please tell the members, Craig, about what Cariland will offer to them.
Well, Cariland is a fintech company that started in Barbados, as you mentioned. But what they do is leverage a end-to-end digital lending platform. And they use that to offer unsecured credit in Barbados. And that's the same intention they have here in Jamaica and we have started to do so. And what makes it different, what makes it end-to-end is the fact that from the point of application to the point of dispersal of funds, everything is done online. And you can do that from the comfort of your homes. So we are perfectly suited for this pandemic and this time that we're living in now where most people are trying to figure out, how do we get things done remotely? Most businesses are shifting to a remote way of operating. Cariland's business model was developed on that remote way of operating. So we leverage this digital lending platform, which is completely end-to-end, to offer what we consider quick and affordable financing. The reason we say quick is because it only takes fifteen minutes for you to apply from your phone, your tablet.
Fifteen minutes?
Fifteen minutes. If you have all your documentation in, which is your pay slips, which you should have in your email, your bank statements, which every bank allows you to pull those down from the internet and your job letter, you upload that with other financial information. And once that is uploaded, within twenty-four hours, you'll get a response from us, whether that is a yes, a no, or you require additional information. Now, that's the quick part of it. The affordable part is the offer. The fact that we lend from a hundred and fifty thousand up to a million dollars. And get this, we actually allow people five years, up to five years to repay those debts. And an unsecured credit, that is really good. Also, our interest rates, which we are very transparent about, will range between thirteen and eighteen percent. And they're all risk-adjusted, which means that if you are a lower risk, you will benefit from a lower rate of interest from us. So we are here to reward people.
So the better your credit rating, for example?
The better your credit rating, the better, the lower your interest rate will be on your loan. And therefore also, that's, it's a dynamic situation. So if you come in today and you're at the higher end of the risk profile and you improve over time, the next time you apply for a loan, you'll get a lower rate. So that is our offering, a hundred and fifty thousand to a million. It's all unsecured credit, which you can get for any purpose. It ranges from thirteen to eighteen percent and it's per annum on the reducing balance. So that's the important thing for your members to understand, that we're all So that's the important thing for your members to understand, that we're already...
Not add-on?
Not add-on rate. Not simple interest. It's under-reducing balance. Meaning as you lower the balance of your loan, the amount of interest you pay towards that loan also lowers, which is a much fairer way of deploying financing. And we have adopted that, which sets us a little bit aside from the microcredit sector. And I would say our offering is more in line with banks and credit unions at the moment. We do have a basic loan requirement, of course. Persons would have to have regular income on a monthly basis. Our minimum is about $85,000 monthly.
Okay.
Your income has to be deployed into a local bank account. This is how we get the whole digital connection with our customers. You have to have good credit history. It's a part of our assessment, your credit risk assessment. You have to be between the ages of 21 and 65. We want you to be resident in Jamaica for at least three years, that you'd have been living here for at least three years, and that you'd have had continuous employment for at least two years.
Okay.
And just to say, if you went into a new job very recently, but you were working somewhere before, your prior history would factor into your application.
As long as you show some stability.
Of course. As long as you show some stability, we are here to work with you. And on top of all of this technology that we bring, because technology is things that other companies can go acquire, they can go develop. What we bring behind our technology is our customer service. And it's a very important aspect of our business and something I've heard you mention in terms of, you call it customer obsessiveness. And we have strategies that are aligned, and I actually call it tech with a smile. It's my, smile is the term that I coined, tech with a smile, because far too many companies nowadays are deploying technology and don't understand that sometimes technology fails.
True.
And if technology fails, there's no one there to help you, to assist you through getting through that technology, then you're going to see that whole system as a failure, that it didn't work for you. So what we try to do and what we actually achieve is deploying excellent customer service behind our technology. So if people are going online and they're not getting through, once you pick up the phone or send an email to Cariland, someone will reach out to you. Someone will respond. And that's what people enjoy about us. And that's why even in Barbados, we've gathered so much support there. It's because people enjoy doing business with us. They like the fact that when they pick up the phone and they need help, there's somebody to speak to.
Great.
So that is the Cariland offer. It has been brought to Jamaica through a partnership with the Victoria Mutual Investments Limited, which has been very forward-thinking in terms of their digital strategy overall to support the VM Group. And I think the direction that you're going in is the right direction. And we are here to support you and your membership with what we believe is a quick and affordable financing product that is perfectly suited for the time that we're now in.
Okay, so just two remainders, Craig. Which website do we go to access Cariland? And just also remind our viewers of the documents that they will need to submit.
Sure, we'll do. Perfectly. All you need to do is go to cariland.com. And once you go to cariland.com, you'll see a Barbados flag and a Jamaican flag at the top right-hand side of the screen. You click on the Jamaican flag and all of the information that you would require to register with us, because you'll have to register a profile before you can apply for a loan. It's very similar to how you would have your Facebook account or your email. You'd have to register first a profile, and then you can do services later on. So you register with us, then you apply for a loan. And the documents that you would require would be your last two-month pay slips, a job letter that has been deployed at least within the last month. And you would require two months' worth of bank statements, and this is for salaried persons. For self-employed persons, the criteria might be a little bit different. You may require six months' bank statements as opposed to two months so that we can prove income over a sustainable time period. And you may have to also provide two years' worth of tax returns to show that you have been responsible and paying your taxes because we are looking for good, credit-worthy, responsible borrowers.
Excellent.
Right? So those are the basic requirements. Everything else is information that you can fill in online, which can be done in 15 minutes. And once you hit that submit button, within 24 hours, sometimes less, somebody will respond to you. If an approval is granted, funds can be deployed within one to three days, depending on the bank that you're banking with. So deployment of funds is quick, application is quick, adjudication process is quick, overall process, quick.
So it's a new way of borrowing?
It's a new way of borrowing.
Convenient, speedy, much less expensive.
And perfectly suited for the time that we're in at the moment.
Thank you very much, Craig Stevens, country manager of Cariland Jamaica Limited. I'm now going to invite Rezworth Berchinson to return to the podium to answer some questions. Oh, Peter. Peter's going to return, I'm sorry, to answer some questions that have come in. And we're going to ask all our viewers to keep submitting questions. Peter and Rez and Craig are all very knowledgeable gentlemen, and they have lots of answers for you. And Peter has his mask off, so he's ready to talk and to provide you with all the answers that you have been looking for. So let's look at some of these questions. All right, so I understand some questions are coming up regarding mortgages, probably features, probably. Oh, do you assist your members in selling land?
Yes, we do. Remember, we spoke about Victoria Mutual Property Services, a full-service property company. So they will sell land on your behalf, or they will show you land that you can buy. So persons who have land out there, they can list it with Victoria Mutual Property Services. And they will help to attract buyers at your price for you to dispose of that land.
Great. So Victoria Mutual Property Services, remember, we have a realtor services viewers, so, you know, we both help persons who are buying as well as selling. From Sam Wales, what about members who are overseas but who do not reside in Canada, USA, or UK? How easy it is, or is it for them to access your services?
Well, we're continuously making it easier. Right now, they can go through our member engagement or through our manager mortgages for any information that they need. But they can contact us directly because, I mean, you know, it's always, we're just an email away from them. And then they can outline exactly what it is that they need or services.
So the email address that they should use?
Is manager@vmbs.com.
Great. Excellent. And from John Dixon, do you, sorry. From Rowan Grant, could it be considered in the near future to amalgamate insurance with a monthly mortgage?
Well, we do that now. Well, it depends on what insurance is. If it's insurance for the property.
Yeah, I'm assuming that is the property insurance.
Right, property, yeah. We do that now. In fact, so we're one-third owner of British Caribbean Insurance Company, which is a general insurance company. And we have a program with them that they add their mortgage, their insurance facilities to our mortgage customers. And it's really at a more discounted rate. For the last three years, we have held our mortgage, the insurance premiums flat.
Right.
But, you know, with all the uncertain weather that we've had.
You've had lots of weather events, yes.
Right, and the reinsurers are chomping at the bit to raise those premiums. But we're negotiating with BCIC to try and ameliorate that raise that will come in '21. But, you know, we...
We do expect an increase, but what you're saying is we try to contain it.
Right.
Okay. Does, from James Blackwood, does VM provide guidance to new property investors for rental properties?
Well, okay, we don't really provide guidance in that. I mean, you must know why you're purchasing the property. You must be very clear. We do not take, we discount rental income as part of the ability to repay the mortgage because we're not relying on that. Rental income is not a reliable source. I mean, in a pandemic like this, you would have realized that persons have a lot of empty apartments or townhomes or houses because, you know, it's just the nature of a pandemic. So we don't rely 100% on rental income. So your ability to repay that mortgage must be based on your job, your occupation. So that is the kind of advice we would give. I mean, to be able to say, listen, you have to be able to ride out...
A situation such as this?
Exactly, exactly.
So I think that's solid advice. And so there is a question now, which I think is for Rezworth Berchinson from Jamaica. What are the two to three stocks? Thank you very much, Peter. Well, you may have others, but let's ask Rez to answer this one now. What are the two to three stocks that you would recommend as a good buy or as good buys at this time? Also, how much is the interest return quarterly or annually on government bonds? And those returns have been coming down in recent years.
Agreed. Thanks, President. Great questions. Let me start with the first question. So whenever we give stock recommendations, you really have to understand the person's risk appetite, financial situation. So I can't be able to give that advice over in this forum.
In this forum.
But what I'd say, though, is that let us reach out to you and have a fulsome conversation to say, well, let's understand where you are on your journey, then we can give some recommendations. That's the first thing. And then secondly, how much interest return on government bonds? I would say, depending on the maturity date, between 5% and 6%, I mean, you can get a five-year bond up to a bond which matures in 2045.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much, Rez. And then the thing about it, too, is that broadly speaking, VM Wealth produces a very, very helpful investor update each week, produced by your excellent research department.
Sure. There's actually one done at the end of each trading day.
Right.
That's one. And on a Monday afternoon, there's a YouTube series called Money Moves, where we give an overview of the last week and an outlook on the next week. So for example, we're now in earnings season. We're dissecting those companies and giving guidance to all of them.
And so you have some viewers, such as the person who just asked that question.
Jamaica.
Jamaica would be able to receive really good stock tips.
Agreed, agreed.
So Jamaica, please subscribe for our YouTube channel and please share your information with us so that you will receive some of those research publications. Julia Clark asks, do you have any plans to introduce a Cirrus card that will allow for access to funds overseas, especially given the fact that we have overseas members or local members with foreign currency accounts? I think that's what Peter, so I'm going to ask Peter to just come, right? Peter walked right in front of a camera. But Peter's going to answer the question of the Cirrus card.
Right.
Yes.
All right, so we're planning to launch our credit card next year summer.
Right.
And right after that, we plan to launch an international debit card using a carrier that, you know, of international repute. So Cirrus is just another mechanism to receive cash from ATMs abroad. Well, with the card that we're planning to launch, the debit card that we're planning to launch next year, you'll be able to do that also. You'll be able to debit your account here in Jamaica, even if you reside in the UK, the United States, Canada, or anywhere else in the world. Where, and this is an international payment company. So I'm pretty certain that the card will be accepted at ATMs in their locale.
That's our members. That will be a very, very convenient implementation for our members. We do look forward to that. We have been working on it for many years.
Right.
And but we wanted to ensure that we have the right partners to provide this service for us. So, you know, please look forward to that. I want to thank you, Peter. Thank you, Craig Stevens. Thank you, Rezworth Berchinson, for sharing. In the next segment, we will have information provided to us by Conroy Rose. Now, Conroy is the CEO of VM Pensions Management Limited. So we're going to welcome Conroy and ask, Conroy, welcome to our digital town hall session. And we're going to ask, you know, to share with our viewers or members and clients and those who are prospective members and clients, all that is happening in our VM pensions business.
Good afternoon, members. Pension, I'm very, very passionate about pensions. And the reason being is that less than 10% of our population is enrolling in a pension plan. The decision to retire, it's a major one. It is laying on emotions, predictions, ambiguous financial consideration. The decision when to leave the workforce is, can be a very exciting one for a lot of individuals. But the decision also comes with consequences. And the most notable consequence that I can really think of, when you decide to leave the workforce, is that you're no longer going to have that pre-retirement income that you had before. You're no longer going to have that salary that you have had before. You have to think about other sources of revenue. And my colleagues spoke about two sources of revenue before. Savings, investing, and the other source is pension. And this is the one that I'm very, very passionate about because less than 10% of the Jamaican population is contributing to a pension plan. So some of us, we may be saving and putting aside a last summer fund for retirement by the time we reach retirement. Some of us may be, as I mentioned before, there are two sources that retirees can really garner additional sources after reaching retirement. So some of us might be saving last summer funds by the time we reach retirement. Some of us may have workplace pension plans that we can draw down funds from. And some of us might have both. We might have savings, and some of us might have workplace pension plans that we can draw down funds from. But some of us may have neither, and this is where we are here for you. This is the most important thing. And that is why I'm here to talk to you about our retirement-approved pension plan. It is very, very, very easy to set up a retirement plan with VM pensions. You can, once you reach the age of 18 to 64, you're eligible to be a part of our retirement plan. Secondly, you have to be a Jamaican. You have to be working here in order to be eligible to set up, to be a part of our approved retirement plan. And most importantly, one of the reasons why a lot of persons, and Courtney made mention about it earlier, because they are saying that they don't have enough money to put aside for pension, but that is not correct. Can you imagine? You can start a pension plan with at least $5,000 monthly, $5,000, only $5,000. Sometimes you spend more than that on buying phone cards and buying other stuff, just $5,000. And this is taking your life into hands, making the right decision. So I want to encourage you, members, to just start. Think about it. Stop the procrastination and start right now. The importance of compounding interest. If you start right now, don't wait until you're close to retirement. You're at the age of 40, 50. That's too long gone. Start right now, and the old benefit of compounding will kick in. My colleagues mention about saving small amounts, and then it will grow, it's just like a snowballing effect. So my friends, the next thing why a lot of persons don't enroll in a pension plan because you don't know about it. You just don't. You think it is very difficult to start. It is a very simple process. You can visit any one of our branches or wealth offices, and you can speak with a representative. And it is easy to be on board. Once you're a member of the Victoria Mutual Group, onboarding process is simple and it is easy. And most importantly, you can go online and you can get your information on our online platform. And this is so convenient. This is what you want. You want to sit in the comfort of your home at your time, and you can pull up your information. You can change your beneficiary information at your convenience. Can you imagine? You don't have to go in a long line, especially in these times. You don't want to be standing in lines. You want to be in the comfort of your home. And we at VM Pensions provide you this kind of platform where you can sit in the comfort of your home and you can change your beneficiary information and you can open an ARS account. And most importantly, as I said, you can start as little as $5,000 per month. As your situation improves, then you can increase your pension, you increase your pension. And in the event that you have hard times, because we are now going through unprecedented times. If you lose your job, if you open an approved retirement scheme with us, it is something that, it is so flexible. is something that, it is so flexible. If you move on to another employer, that retirement scheme goes along with you. That's the kind of flexibility that it provides. So it is something that if hardship comes along, you can stop, it is still in, it is still active, and then you can continue as your employment continues. So don't be in that statistics where, when you reach that golden age of your life, can you imagine? You're depending on your children. And I'm appealing to you members, now is the time to start. A lot of us in our discussions with each other, we said that we're about to start a pension plan, we're about to start, but guess what? We need to put action into place. We need to start now. And as I said before, you can start small and as your situation improves, then you can increase your contribution. And one of the most important things about our approved retirement scheme, it provides you with tax-free benefits, tax-deductible benefits. And what does this mean? Before you pay your income taxes, your pension contribution is deducted from your salary. This is most important for you. So sign up with our approved retirement scheme and you will enjoy the benefit of tax deductible. In addition to that, the gains that you're going to get on your investment when you're contributing to an approved retirement scheme, the gains are tax-free. Unlike most long-term savings accounts where you're only restricted to $1 million per annum, and beyond that, it's going to be taxed. It's going to be taxed, it's going to be charged on it. But in terms of your gains that you're going to be getting on the approved retirement scheme, it is going to be tax-free. So now is the time. Now is the time to start. Do not procrastinate. And I mentioned earlier, there are three sources of income that you usually rely on when you stop getting that pre-retirement income. One, and my colleague spoke about it earlier, savings and investment. The second great pillar is pensions. And this is the one I'm most passionate about because your children is not your pension. Your community is not your pension. Your faith is in your hand. And this is why we are here for you. This is what VM Group is about. It is a part of our strategy. It is a part of our mandate. We were created by our people. We were created to deliver this value to you. And I am here as a servant to sit with you one-on-one. You can visit any one of our branches, any one of our wealth offices, and you can sit with a representative. And it is easy to enroll in an approved retirement plan.
Thank you very much, Conroy, for that impassioned plea. But it's very relevant, very appropriate. One thing I'd ask you to share with those who are participating, what is the maximum percentage of your income that can be invested in a pension plan to benefit from the tax advantage that you just mentioned?
Very good question, Courtney. The maximum contribution you can make is up to 20%, up to 20% of your gross annual salary. And this is very important. If you can contribute up to 20%, in most situations, persons start off with 5%, right? If you're already in a pension plan, I want to appeal to you members, try and increase your voluntary contribution up to the maximum level of 20%.
Thank you very much, Conroy. And now we're going to be joined by Michael Howard. Michael is the CEO of VM Money Transfer Services. Conroy, please don't go too far. You're going to be called back to answer some questions because I'm sure after that very passionate presentation, we have lots of questions to do with pension. Want to say, those who are participating via the Zoom platform, please use that button to raise your hand and ask your questions in the chat so that we can read the questions out loud and provide you with the appropriate answers. All right? So those who are on Zoom, please raise your hand and type your questions in. We will answer them as quickly as possible. Welcome, Michael Howard.
Thank you.
How are you this Sunday evening?
I'm doing very well. I'm doing very well.
Good. Well, please share with the members and fans what VM Money Transfer has been doing to help them to advance during this time.
Sure. This is a challenging time for all. This is not just a challenging time in Jamaica, but it's a challenging time overall, worldwide. Let us talk a little about what the market has been doing. Over the last few years, for remittances, the market coming into Jamaica, we have seen that the remittances coming into Jamaica from overseas is 2.5 billion US dollars. That's a large amount, 2.5 billion US dollars coming to a small country like this. However, the World Bank indicated that for 2020, there will be a 20% reduction in remittances. For 2021, the World Bank indicated that there will be a 14% reduction in remittances. So we saw those numbers from the World Bank and we were saying, well, all the remittance businesses would be in trouble, deep trouble moving forward. However, VMBS, the parent company, along with VM Money Transfer, we got together and we said, how can we turn things around and make this work? And we saw a total turnaround from what the World Bank was saying for VM Money Transfer. We saw increase in remittances coming from the diaspora, coming from the US, coming from the UK, coming from Canada and other parts of the world. We saw increases that we didn't expect. It's amazing. So we looked again and we said, the World Bank really said remittance would be 20% down. When we look at our numbers, we were over 40% up year over year. And it's amazing. We were saying, all right, what is it VM is doing right? And we looked and we looked at the Bank of Jamaica numbers and we saw remittances overall coming into Jamaica were 5% growth. And we were saying VM is growing over 40% with the Bank of Jamaica showing a 5% growth. So we were doing exceptionally well. And we realized it's some of the things we're providing.
Yes.
One of the things is the direct-to-account. We saw increase in our direct-to-account transactions. Those are persons overseas sending funds directly to VMBS bank account and other banks, but VMBS most of all. We saw 80% increase in those numbers.
Because that's convenient, that's convenient and safe.
Convenient and safe. We saw our partner, one of our biggest partner, MoneyGram. MoneyGram indicated that their digital payments coming to Jamaica, coming to VMBS, went up over 100%. So persons are sitting in the convenience of their homes and sending funds to Jamaica. So we had to say, let us capitalize on this. How could we capitalize on this? We look at the direct-to-account service we are providing and say, how can we make this service much better? We looked at the process and we saw that person had to leave their homes, come into a branch. You mentioned earlier that we're broadcasting now from Halfway Tree. We saw the numbers at Halfway Tree. I would say, why we have a line here? Persons can now use a web portal that we create to sign up for direct-to-account. So you don't have to leave the comfort of your home. When remittances come for you here in Jamaica, you will get a SMS message. There is a link inside that SMS. You click on that SMS message and you just put your name, your address, take a picture of your ID, send to us, and we will send the funds to your account. That's it. You don't have to leave the comfort of your home. And we saw that working very well and we saw our numbers keep going up because of this. We also introduced what we call Zoom direct-to-account automated transactions. So these are persons overseas sending transactions to Jamaica through Zoom and they will be sending these funds at 10, 11, 12 in the night. And while we're sleeping, the receiver, if we have all your information, if you use the web portal and you sign up, we will send these funds to your bank account 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night while you're sleeping. So your funds moving while you're sleeping, your funds getting to your VMBS account while you're sleeping. So we saw this automated way as a big boost.
So if this person turns up at the ATM at eight o'clock in the morning, the funds would be in their account.
Which is exceptional. And we saw this and we capitalized on it and it's working very well. We also looked at MoneyGram, the second largest remittance company in the world, and we did not have direct-to-account for MoneyGram. So persons had to come in and do a cash pickup every single time at one of our locations. And we decided to do direct-to-account for MoneyGram. And this direct-to-account service will start the end of November. So persons coming in to do these MoneyGram transactions, we should see shorter lines moving forward because we'll now have direct-to-account. So we talked about direct-to-account. We talked about persons using online, but we still have our other locations. We still have the over-the-counter locations. We have 85 locations across Jamaica. So we have five VMBS-owned locations that we call VM Money Express. We have the VMBS branches that provide this service, but we also have what we call subagents. So these are outlets in supermarkets, hardware, pharmacies, and so on. And these locations are doing very well. But what I should mention, the VM Money Express stores that were started just three years ago, they are now accounting for over 40% of all our transactions. So the decision that the executives made at VMBS to go this route, to have the VMBS Money Express stores, it's working very well. We have seen the numbers grow. We have seen 40% growth in all the transactions.
Great.
Right. So we look at the benefits that you can get by sending your funds through VM Money Transfer to VMBS. Persons can actually use the online VMBS service. They could use funds coming through VM Money Transfer to pay their mortgages at VMBS. And Peter mentioned it earlier, persons will have free ABM access all the time. So send your funds through VM Money Transfer, put it into VMBS, you use your card at any ABM islandwide and it's free.
Great.
The funds are there. We looked at overall and say, how does VM Money Transfer contribute to VMBS, the group? And we believe it contributes in many ways. We bring new customers through the door that we could benefit from. We provide increased profitability. We have seen the profits of this entity, VM Money Transfer, risen over the years substantially. We provide dividend payments to VMBS Group because VMBS Group is our parent and we provide dividend payments. And we provide FX dollars and we know foreign exchange is short, tourism in Jamaica is down, and it's important to have FX at your disposal and we provide that for the group. So those are the benefits we provide to your members. Those are some of the benefits we provide to VM Group overall, and that's what we're doing at VM Money Transfer.
Great. Thank you very much, Michael. Lots of good, rich information there about what we're doing in our money transfer business. And before that, Conroy Rose, who is CEO of VM Pensions, shared with you the importance of retirement planning and starting a pension plan. We're going to now invite questions. Remember, some of you may be participating via Zoom, some others by YouTube and Facebook. Please let us have your questions. Michael Howard and Conroy Rose will be happy to answer them now. We're going to invite Conroy to stand close by in case any questions come up for him. So let's look at some of the questions. Okay. What is a fixed income solution and how is it beneficial to customers? I think this sounds like one for Resworth Burchinson, who will quickly make his way back. Let me see some of the other questions, please. Let me see number 10. Yeah, Resworth, stand right here. So Res' question, okay, question from Sofair. All right. So fixed income solution, let's go back to number nine, please. Do you have a mic on? What is a fixed income solution and how is it beneficial to customers?
Okay, no problem. So a fixed income solution is much like a fixed deposit. So at VM Wealth, we offer repurchase agreements, we offer bonds. So we call it a fixed income solution. It simply means that you invest the money for a fixed period of time, at the end the money matures, and you get back your principal and the interest. If you want to keep on holding it, that option is available to you.
Great. All right, thank you very much, Res. And let's look at question 10, which I think is from Michael Howard. Let's scroll on to question 10. From Sofair, why is it that we cannot send money through the New York branch of VMBS to Jamaican account? It costs to buy a money order and then send to Pennsylvania, then to Jamaica. I'm not comfortable using Zoom anymore.
I'm not sure why you're not comfortable using Zoom because Zoom is very effective, it's very efficient. I can say sending funds through Zoom to Jamaica, if you're sending to your bank account in Jamaica and you're sending anything from $1 to $300, it will cost you $2.99 US. If you're sending anything over $300 US to any amount to your VMBS account in Jamaica, it's free through Zoom. So Zoom is very efficient, it's very cost-effective. So I'm not sure why you're not comfortable with Zoom, but I think you should give them another try because the price makes it affordable. It worth doing. If you're not comfortable with Zoom, we have other partners also. We have World Remit. We could go World Remit, Google World Remit, it's there. You could go RIA, R-I-A, that's also another partner of us that you can send directly to your account. You can also go to MoneyGram. MoneyGram has walk-in stores, MoneyGram is online, and you can send your funds directly here to your bank account. So there are other options and there are other entities that we use here at VM. We have a unique situation where we have six partners and you can choose any of those six partners to send your funds here to VMBS.
Thank you very much, Michael. And now we're going to Zoom. We're going to show the Zoom participants online. And if we just wait for a minute. Okay. All right, thank you. We'll probably take the Zoom questions right after Nakita West. Thank you very much, Michael. And now, and thank you very much, Conroy. Very good information from both of you. Now we're going to invite Ms. Nakita West. Nakita is the manager of the VM Foundation. Victoria Mutual, we've always been great corporate citizens, right? And for many years, we have been a sponsor of the National Leadership Prayer Breakfast. We have sponsored under-13 football competition in St. James. We have had scholarship programs. We have sponsored the Marriage and the Family Series. We have supported lots of community events and initiatives. But we thought that we'd want to put even more energy behind our philanthropic efforts. And so a few years ago, we established the VM Foundation. And Nakita West, the manager of the foundation, Nakita, please tell our viewers what the Victoria Mutual team has been doing to help people advance and to improve quality of life.
Thanks, Courtney. Good afternoon to our members and clients who have joined us. It's my pleasure to tell you about the Victoria Mutual Foundation and the work that we have been doing, especially this year. So as Courtney indicated, we focus on leadership and nation-building, youth empowerment, and of course, health and family. But I want to focus on our, a few things that we've done a little differently this year to improve the lives of our members as well as, you know, Jamaicans globally. The first thing I want to talk about is our Head Start Scholarship Program. Our Head Start Scholarship Program is a benefit to you, our members, your children, or students savers. And so as students savers, you have the opportunity each year to apply and be considered, whether you're at the PEP level, going to secondary, or whether you are at secondary and considering tertiary studies. And so this year, we actually are very pleased with our team members because it's really their energy behind the efforts that we were able to improve the limits of what we have offered to our scholars this year. And so we moved from our bursaries or PEP bursaries of $20,000 to $50,000. And this year, we awarded all our bursaries at $50,000. About 57 students were awarded. We've moved our tertiary levels from $130,000 to $200,000. And, you know, my boss here, Mr. Campbell, has challenged us to go a little higher and I think we will be able to do that. So thanks for that challenge as well. But thank you, team members, really and truly because at the end of September, we were able to raise $1.6 million because our team members have contributed monthly to our initiative, to our scholarship initiative. That's them believing in our students. That's them believing in our scholars and really and truly ensuring that they can continue their academic journey. We are with them. But not only that. We were really and truly also able to provide tablets to all of our students. We were able to help to close that digital gap because we know it's challenging. We're all, you know, students are going to school virtually right now and we know that they are not able to access some of these resources. So our 57 scholars were able to receive tablets. And of course, we're conducting tertiary interviews now and making selections. Quite tough. Quite tough. A lot of persons are in need. But we will also award them with laptops. So they too, because some of those challenges are coming out in our interviews, that they are having those challenges attending classes. And so thanks to our team members for helping to not only increase in the tuition, but also being able to provide tablets and laptops to our students.
Great. So at some point in the future, we're now going to invite all members to also participate, just as all team members have been doing.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We are currently researching the different platforms to ensure that we can make those contributions. But we can make those contributions right now.
Okay.
Left my phone and I can give you the account information. But we do have a Victoria Mutual Foundation account that you can make your contributions to.
But you can see it on our website.
They can see it on our website, thank you, Mr. Campbell. You can visit our website at www.vmbss.com or vm.foundation and you can find that account information. But you can also email us at vm.foundation@myvmgroup.com and we will respond to you quickly.
Thank you very much, Nakita. Good information on the foundation and really good work that the foundation has been doing for the young people of Jamaica especially. So now we're going to invite some more questions and we're going to ask Chantal and Paulette to stand by. We're going to ensure now that your questions are received. So please stand by, Chantal and Paulette. Okay. Alright. So here we have, you're live. You're live in the VM Digital Town Hall. Please, let's hear your question. Sir?
My name is Rowan Grant.
Hi, Rowan.
I'm a government worker with the Ministry of Health for like more than 25 years now.
Yes.
I have less than 20 years, more than 15 years left in the service. We don't have a pension plan, so to speak. So I was gonna ask, I asked a question in the group. Can I start a pension plan with VMBS at this time?
Great question and thanks for that question, Rowan. Conroy Rose is going to return. He's so happy to receive this question. And so he'll provide you. Please listen out.
Hi, Rowan. Rowan, right?
Yeah.
So Rowan, you can't actively contribute to a pension plan. So if you're now contributing to a pension plan, according to the regulations, you cannot. So unless you are no longer actively contributing to the pension plan that is with the ministry.
But there are other investment products. Other investment products that you can use.
So this is what I mentioned earlier. So if you're actively contributing to a pension plan, what you need to do is either look at savings or investing with VM Wealth. So those are the other two pillars I made mention about. Because it's really talking about building enough income. When you reach that point in time, you'll be able to supplement the kind of lifestyle that you want. So we do have investment options with Victoria Mutual Wealth that you can invest in. The unit trust product is a very good product to invest in as well as bonds and stocks. And with the building society, we have products like the deferred share. We have ISA for home. And we have a lot of investment and savings account that you can also invest in.
Alright, but I was told what we are contributing to is not actually a pension plan. That's why I'm asking.
Oh, yes, yes. So if you're not contributing to an approved pension plan, then you can contribute to our ARIS scheme.
So Rowan, what I'm going to suggest is that you contact us this evening or tomorrow morning. So let us have your details and we can, you know, verify what your current situation is and give you the appropriate advice. How is that? Right?
Yes.
So we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you very much for participating. Thanks for your questions.
Can I?
One more question? No, I'm not hearing, not hearing him, no.
I'm used to Phoebe Campbell from my end down in Mobley.
Oh, yes, yes.
I was wondering if I could...
She's a great branch manager. She's a great branch manager, isn't she?
Yes, excellent.
Please send lots of your friends and family to Phoebe in Monty, alright? Good. Thank you.
Alright.
Okay, do we have any more questions? Okay. We're going to ask the persons to just unmute so that we can hear you when you come on, alright? Thank you very much, Rowan. And Nadine? Nadine is coming up next. Nadine, please unmute and, you know, let us show your, activate your camera so that we can see you and hear you clearly. Nadine, thank you very much.
Okay.
We're still on Rowan.
Let me see if I can get that done right away. Suddenly, I can't get it going.
Okay, sorry about that, Nadine, we aren't hearing you. So I'm going to thank all our presenters. Peter Reed, Resworth Berchinson, Craig Stephen, Conroy Rose. We do have some more questions. Okay, I was doing a wrap. Okay, let us see the... Okay. My five-year investment has matured, but I have not been able to come... I'm not seeing that word. My five-year investment has matured, but I have not been able to come in. What are the repercussions? I'm sure, I assume that's a deferred shares, Peter. What are the repercussions, if any? Will the interest roll over with the principal? So this is a deferred share instrument. Has matured, the person has not been able to come in and asking about repercussions and will the interest roll over with the principal?
Yeah, what will happen is that as a deferred share is matured, we will put it in a savings account and it will continue to earn interest. There will be no repercussions on the part of the holder of the deferred share. It will just transfer into a normal savings account at our savings interest rate.
Great. Another one for you, Peter. Are there plans from Dr. Marcy Morgan? Good evening. Are there plans to have a VMBS credit card?
Yes. Plans are well underway. We have a project to deliver a credit card by the summer of '21. So June, July, you can look out for that card. It will be Visa-branded card and it, you know, it will have some nice features for all levels of spending.
Great. Thank you very much, Peter. So that's June, July of 2021. And there, final question. Are scholarships available for members doing graduate studies? So Nakita will answer this one. Does the foundation have scholarships available for members doing graduate studies?
We do offer scholarships for students who are pursuing graduate at the graduate level, but it's only in their final year. That's called our Master Plan Scholarship. So we do offer that. That is also at $200,000 and we offer it each year.
Great. Thank you very much, Nakita. Are there any other questions? No. Alright. So that's it. It's left for me then to again thank our presenters. Peter Reed, Resworth Berchinson, Conroy Rose, Craig Stephen, Michael Howard, and Nakita West. And to thank all our participants, just thank you for spending your Sunday afternoon with us, for listening to our presentation, for those who ask questions, for raising those questions with us. But most of all, we want to thank you for doing business with Victoria Mutual. We are here for you. It is a privilege for us to serve you. And we take very, very seriously our mission of empowering our Jamaican people to achieve financial independence by owning their own homes and achieving greater financial independence through our mortgage solutions, through our investment solutions. So I want to thank you for joining us this evening. And please contact the VMBS office nearest you. Call our member engagement center so that we can continue to provide you with the right advice to help you achieve financial well-being. Thanks again. That's it.